Would be, uh, Mr. Chair-
Corporate leaders.
Corporate leaders. Uh, Mr. Chairman and, uh, members of Board of Directors. Primary purpose of the Public Facilities Corporation is to facilitate the use of COPs as a means of finance, uh, public facilities. COPs are common means in which we finance public facilities. And what's unique about COPs is that the certificates are secured by lease revenue between two entities. Um, and, uh, that need for that second entity is the primary purpose for the PFC. Um, the PFC, uh, however, does require that we meet once a year. Uh, we have an annual meeting, Board of Directors, approve the minutes, elect the officers, and receive and file a financial report. Financial report is, uh, attached to the staff report unless you have any questions about transactions that occurred during the year. Uh, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Any questions, Dan? Okay. Thank you, Dan. Anyone from the public want to comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the report.
Move, receive and file.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, is there any public comments on anything not on the agenda for the Public Facilities Corporation? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, we are adjourned. Okay, we'll move on to our study session, uh, for, uh, July fourteenth, two thousand nine. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that Councilmember Rosansky is absent with an excused absence.
Okay, Councilman Rosansky called and indicated he would try and get here by the end of the study session, but he'll be here, uh, for the closed session for sure. First item is clarification of items on the consent counter. Councilwoman Daigle?
Uh, yes, I had a couple of questions on number seventeen. We're going to be purchasing some, um, vehicles for, uh, refuse services and, and I just want to ensure that the equipment that we're purchasing will be adaptable for, you know, whatever our future needs might be. So if you could maybe explain what it is that we're purchasing and, and how it could accommodate future needs.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. Uh, yes, Councilmember Daigle did ask that question of staff. The truck we're purchasing has the bin in the front where we hand-load the trash, uh, dumped the containers today. Councilmember Daigle's question was if we went to an automated system, even for part of the city, would that truck be able to, um, operate with automated containers? That question, uh, that answer is yes. Um, there is an adapter that fits on the front of those trucks that can actually tip those, uh, containers right into the bin. So i- it's very versatile piece of equipment and, um, works both ways. In addition, I'll add something even better than that. It also can work as a commercial, um, truck. Uh, on Fourth of July holiday, we had our contractor miss the Washington Street bins, which was not a good day to be without commercial service. So those trucks can act as, uh, straight commercial trucks as well.
Thank you for that report. And then I had one other, um, question. It was on fifteen and, um, I'm okay with, uh, tsunami siren, but it kind of brings in another question. Um, and this isn't the first time I've heard this, but, um, there are citizens that have kind of asked, you know, well, the sirens seem kind of loud in the city. Have we ever looked at that comprehensively in terms of, um, you know, the pitch and when they're being, um, you know, set off and everything else? And, and since the most recent kind of, um, comment to my attention, I was sitting in my office on Bayside Drive and they come over that bridge and, and it's really loud. So, and I understand the purpose if you want a loud siren, but, you know, how loud does it need to be?
I think we talked about this, uh, situation before and, and, uh, the, uh, whenever we submitted the specifications, there was a specification for the loudness. And, uh, the testing of the sirens, we think, would be in the same strength as we would if we ran the sirens because there was an emergency situation to make, make sure that, uh, not only some people could hear, but all of the people that would be within, uh, the sound of that siren would be able to hear the siren. The question I, I think, that we really need to wrestle with is how long a duration that the, uh, and how often would the sirens be tested. But Chief, you probably have much better answers than I do.
Okay, I'm sorry. I really probably communicated this in a confusing way. My question wasn't tsunami. I was just sort of using that as a springboard into sirens in general and at some point if we could look at that.
Uh, yes, number four, which is, seems to be designed to deal with the storage of boats. We're talking about, uh, maintenance, construction and maintenance activities. I just was confused as to why we're using that approach to deal with, with the storage of boats and things like that, which is, seems to be the background of it.
I think because the, the issue is not just storage, but when a project of, of working on a boat or some other kind of backyard project, if you will, carries on for an extended length of time. And so that was why we were looking at the code amendment this way. Trying not to, to limit it to just one situation, but think about what else we may encounter in the future.
Construction and maintenance. I was thinking in terms of the, the building itself and sort of real estate type things. You're saying any kind of construction or maintenance, any project of any sort?
Correct. Councilman Webb?
I'm in.
Councilman Hen?
Uh, yes, it's, uh, not so much a clarification as a correction. On item number three, um, page three, item F at the top, at the very end of that paragraph, I think we want to say rounded to the nearest one hundred dollars to be consistent with the dollar amount in there, not ten. I presume we can just make that correction.
I'm sorry, was that the minutes? What are you, what are you talking about?
No, I'm talking about item number three on the consent calendar.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Just so you know that I read these things.
Okay, any other items? Councilman Hen, any other items? That's it? Mayor Tom Curry?
No items.
Okay, and I have no items. Okay, our first discussion item is-
Mr. Mayor, if I can interrupt, uh, excuse me. I did think that this would be a very good opportunity for, to, to introduce you to our, uh, new interim police chief, Robert Lumen, who is in the audience. And if it's all right with you, I'll have him step forward to the microphone to where he can introduce himself and give just a little bit of his background and give you an initiation as to who he is.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Selich, members of the city council. I'm a California native, uh, born and raised in, in Long Beach. When I was twenty-one, I hired on the police department there and spent the next, uh, thirty-one, almost thirty-two years, uh, working for the Long Beach Police Department. Over that time, uh, I was fortunate enough to, um, move up through the ranks and, uh, ultimately retired as chief of police of that agency. And, uh, over that time, I also, uh, had the opportunity to work. Many of the assignments that were available, uh, in that department in, at one level or another. Um, I retired in nineteen ninety-nine, uh, from the Long Beach Police Department in, uh, November. And in January of two thousand, less than two months later, I was out at Riverside serving, uh, in an interim capacity as their chief of police. I was out there for about eight months and during that time they did a chief selection process and hired, uh, Russ Leach, uh, who is their present, uh, chief. He's been out there since that time. Um, I retired again in two thousand and, um, and then I was retired until all the way to two thousand and two. And in two thousand and two, I got a call from, uh, Redondo Beach and I reinstated and I went to work for Redondo Beach as their chief of police and I worked there for almost four years. And, uh, I retired, uh, from Redondo in two thousand and six and, uh, did in two thousand and seven some consulting work for a company called Willdam. And, uh, I also have done some teaching in that time. And then I got the call here from, from Newport. I, uh, was educated in the Long Beach schools and, uh, I took a master, uh, a bachelor's degree from Cal State Dominguez Hills and went on and got a master's degree at USC. It's a little university up there in LA. They have a football team. And, uh, and then as far as, uh, training goes, uh, I've had, uh, some pretty extensive training over my career. Uh, I went to the delinquency control institute at, at USC. I've been through the, uh, post-executive development course of the state of California here. I have been through the FBI National Academy.
Is that in Brentwood?
Uh, the National Academy?
Yeah.
It's in Quantico, Virginia. And it's, uh, an eleven-week course back there. And probably, I would say, less than one percent of all law enforcement officers, uh, in the country, uh, get an opportunity to go back there. So it was, uh, I was very fortunate to, to be able to do that. I also went to, uh, another course. It's called the National Executive Institute, uh, sponsored by the FBI. And it is designed for, uh, police chiefs and serfs of the largest cities in the nation. And so I was fortunate enough to go through that course. And as part of that course, we went over to England and, uh, attended, uh, Bramble Hill, England, uh, their national academy there for a week and got exposure to the English, uh, policing system. I, uh, I have been married to my wife Annette for forty-three years, two children. Uh, my children are forty-three and thirty-nine, so they're not little. Um, my son is a commander on the Long Beach Police Department. My daughter was a police officer for ten years until, uh, she had a knee injury that occurred on duty and three operations later they, uh, couldn't fix it and they had to retire her. My son-in-law is a, uh, police officer. I have a nephew who's a police officer. Uh, my son-in-law's father was a police officer, so we have a, a heavy background in policing. Um, I have been fairly successful in my career, but I haven't been so successful at retirement. I think I get an F in retirement. Uh, but I truly, uh, want to tell you how excited I am to be here and, uh, how fortunate and honored I feel to have the opportunity to work with the men and women of the Newport Beach Police Department and the greater city family. I know how, uh, intricately important it is for the police department to work with all the other city departments. And, uh, my intention is we do that seamlessly. I think we're all better off if we do that. So, be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions to the new chief?
Welcome aboard.
Well, thank you very much. It truly is my pleasure to be here. I, uh, I enjoy boating and I enjoy the beach and you have both here.
You've come to the right place.
Yes, I did.
Seems to me you've been quite successful at retiring. You've done it a lot of times.
Yeah, I have, you know. One of these times, uh, I guess maybe I'll get it right, but I hope it's not in the, uh, near future.
Thank you, Chief.
Bye-bye. Thank you.
All right, so we'll get on to the second item then, which is the Balboa Village Parking Management Study.
Uh, as part of, um, implementing our strategic plan for economic development, um, the city and the Economic Development Committee, um, have embarked on parking management studies for a number of the older commercial areas in the city. And Balboa Village is the first one to reach the point where recommendations are being presented to the city council. And I'm going to call on Mark Linsenmeyer from Walker Parking Consultants, who have done the work for us to make the presentation to you.
Thank you. Um, thank you, council, for having me in today. I'm, uh, Mark Linsenmeyer with Walker Parking, as Sharon said. I have, uh, just a short slide presentation to kind of go over some of our findings and observations and, I guess, methodology for the parking study in Balboa Village. So I hope to give you enough of a background that you, that you can see where we're going, um, but not so much that your board is deterred by our, our parking studies. Um, as we mentioned, uh, we looked at, uh, the Balboa Village area as part of a, I think, a five, a five-area process. And in this, uh, particular study area, we kind of went from, I guess, what I'll call the, the south part down towards B Street, um, going north, uh, through the, you know, coast to coast up to Coronado Street and kind of everything in between. Uh, you know, we kind of look at things a little differently, I guess, when you're a parking consultant as opposed to just, uh, somebody that's driving around looking for a parking space. But one of the, the first things we do as part of any process is try to identify the number of parking stalls, parking areas, parking spaces, I guess they're commonly called. Um, and, and to make sure that we're looking at what everybody else sees when they come town to an area. Um, in Balboa Village, we were able to identify two-hundred-and-eighty on-street spaces. And by that we mean like any street that, or any space that's, uh, directly off the street. So whether it's metered or un-metered, um, anything that can be accessed from, from the street. And we identified two-hundred-and-eighty spaces in the Balboa Village study area. For the off-street spaces, again, we looked at, uh, a much wider parameter, everything that's not on-street. And in, uh, Balboa Village, as with many commercial areas or business areas, we also looked at, uh, some of the private lots, the larger private lots, like anything above five spaces. So if it's, you know, a, a parking lot behind a drugstore, while it's private, we do think that the public can still access it, so we, we count it in our inventory. Um, in Balboa Village, we also were able to, to study the, the beach lots, which are a significant piece of the, the parking supply in this area. Um, so within that, you know, we looked at about seven-eighths of the parking in Balboa Village where off-street spaces, the remaining, uh, one-eighth or so was, uh, on-street. But the total was right around sixteen-hundred-and-thirty-six parking spaces. After we did our, uh, parking inventory counts, uh, we took it upon ourselves to, with the help of the city, to identify certain days that we thought would be sort of peak or busy times of the year to, to look at parking. And we wanted to do it on a weekday and on a weekend. And so this is actually from, from last July twenty-fourth in, uh, two thousand and eight. Uh, we did some on-street, uh, and off-street occupancy numbers. So, you know, we looked at the inventory of sixteen-hundred-and-thirty-six and tried to find some times when we thought tho- those areas would be filled with, with vehicles. And as you can see from the weekday, um, the, the parking area, the parking intensity is not too bad. That about two-thirds of the spaces on a weekday are filled at the peak time, which in this, uh, this criteria was one PM. Um, and it fills up a little slowly in the morning, reaches its peak at one PM and by seven PM it starts to, starts to recede a little bit, uh, as we go forward. So just, uh, just short of eleven-hundred parking spaces at one PM during the peak times. The weekends was quite a different story. So when we look at, uh, at parking, both on-street and off-street, we, we look at it in terms of, you know, what's reasonably an effective supply. Um, on an on-street space, we, we think that, you know, again, about seven out of every eight parking spaces, um, if they're, uh, full, that's a good, good inventory. Anything more than that, it gets to be impacted. Um, it's right around eighty-five percent. For off-street, the, the number's a little bit higher, probably around ninety or ninety-five percent, depending on where you are. But as you can see from, again, the, the one PM, uh, parking occupancy on the weekend, um, it exceeds ninety-six percent of the inventory. So fifteen-hundred-and-seventy-seven spaces were occupied, sixteen-hundred-and-thirty-six were available. Um, and, and as I mentioned, you know, there are some, some private spaces there that probably account for some of those, uh, unoccupied stalls. There may be some ADA spaces that weren't occupied. There may just be some, some frictional movement between when the cars were pulling out of the spaces and when our inventory staff walked by. Um, but the bottom line on, on this slide is, is that on the weekends, the, the downtown Balboa Village area is very impacted with, with a lot of cars, which I'm sure is not news to anyone. We also broke out like each block and, and looked at that independently. Um, we identified twenty-three discreet, uh, blocks in Balboa Village. And it doesn't, uh, come out very clearly on this slide, but in our report in the appendices, I think, I think the numbers come out a little bit better. Um, but we basically tried to look at that and see, see if there's any pattern as to, as to where the, the, the parking is available, um, where there's some occupancy that, uh, is either over-impacted or, or some opportunities for parking. And as you can see, on, on the, on the weekend, it's just kind of chalk block everywhere. Um, there's some smaller, smaller blocks such as, uh, sixteen and, and I guess, you know, even looking at, uh, block number six here that aren't ass-full. But again, those are, are likely private lots, um, that, that just aren't filling with, with public vehicles on the weekends. But overall, once again, it's, it's extremely impacted.
Mark, on, uh, on block nineteen, how do you get a hundred-and-twenty percent? What, what does that mean?
Uh, sure. Um, I think on, on block nineteen, again, we were looking at, uh, about ten spaces. And typically when we see anything that's above, above inventory, we would, uh, estimate that it's probably parked illegally, either in, in a fire lane or in, in, uh, a curb that we wouldn't think a car would typically, uh, park. Uh, so it's an unmarked, uh, space in a lot.
I think those little French cars that park brick and icarus.
It could, and, and, and it even could be, you know, theoretically, I guess, you know, motorcycle parking and, and some of the stripe spaces. So we don't necessarily discriminate as to what kind of a vehicle it is. Um, you know, if we see a hundred-and-twenty percent in, say, the beach lot, then we think we have a problem. But on, on a smaller lot where there's, there's ten, ten stalls, um, there's, there's probably two vehicles that are parked illegally.
Mark, uh, when, when you see a number like ninety-six percent in terms of utilization, uh, would you also say that's typically accompanied by extra traffic congestion for people cruising for parking spaces? Or can, can you comment on that?
Uh, certainly, yeah. I mean, I think that's been, uh, well documented. Uh, Professor Donald Shupe at, at UCLA, um, I can't claim any, any loyalty to UCLA, so I won't comment on, on the football program there. Um, but, but what he studied i- is that, uh, you know, traffic circulation, as much as thirty percent of the traffic on any given street, he studied, uh, the, the block around UCLA in Westwood and identified, you know, just over thirty percent of the vehicles on the street at any given time were circling, looking for parking. Um, so he thinks, and, and we agree, that a significant piece of, of traffic congestion in a commercial area, in a popular area, in a popular beach area, would come from cars circling the block looking for parking. Um, our experience in, in Newport Beach and in this coastal communities is that, that holds even probably more so true there. Um, as, as cars sort of, you know, kind of hope for parking somewhere, they'll continue to, to circulate until they either find that sort of that ideal free spot or give up and pull into one of the, the larger paid lots. Um, so, so we do think there's a, a significant connection between impacted parking and, and traffic.
What is the vacancy percentage, if you will, for an area that's an impacted area such as this one that you would consider to be adequately parked?
Um, in terms of the, the, the percentage of vehicles that are in the, in the-
Right.
-in the system at any one time. Um, again, you know, when we look at this with the big beach lot, I think we identified right around ninety or ninety-one percent as, you know, being sort of the, the uppermost effective supply. And below that, or above that number, the, the efficiency of the system starts to degrade. Um, so people are waiting too long, there's too much circulation, there's just not enough, uh, parking spaces for the number of people that want to come down. Um, you know, parking is, is not necessarily, it's a derived demand. It's not an inducer of demand. Um, so, you know, it's trying to satisfy the demand for other areas. In this, in this neighborhood, it's, it's likely the beach that's driving a lot of the demand. Um, so it's hard to, to supply enough to, to satisfy that demand.
On-street?
On-street, yeah. It's right around eighty-five percent. Um, as I mentioned, you know, sort of the efficiency or the effective supply of the on-street, uh, population goes down above eighty-five percent. Um, again, it's just, you know, a rule of thumb, but it's one that's, would be found to be effective, uh, across the country. We also tried to identify, let me just get a laser pointer here, um, the, the license plate inventory, what we call turnover. So we took, um, just basically a sample of the area in this little triangle here. I don't know how well that, that shows up for you. I'm, I'm, I'm challenged by color, so it barely shows up for me. Um, but we were able to identify three-hundred-and-seventeen parking spaces in this area. And so we thought, well, let's see how long cars are staying and we'll conduct a, a license plate inventory or turnover count. So what we did was, was get up at eight AM, um, sent our crew around to write down the last four digits of every license plate in that area and, uh, do that again every hour throughout the day until six PM. What we found was that there's a, a significant number of cars that stay beyond, um, stays that, that, that five-hour limit. Uh, in this instance, we have a hundred-and-sixty-six vehicles staying in the area more than five hours. Um, and in most, in most communities, we, and we think that indicates either a lot of long-term residents staying on the street or a lot of employees from some of the local businesses, restaurants, et cetera, that are on the street. Um, here it's probably a mix between employees, residents, and, and beach, beach visitors. This was taken on a weekday, so there's probably not a whole lot of pressure on, on the beach on the weekdays, as our earlier slide indicated. And, and there's not a whole lot of, of parking management, uh, limitations on some of the, the on-street spaces here in terms of either parking meters or, or time restrictions, um, that, that would, you know, suggest that there should be a lot of turnover. There are parking management. I'm not implying that there's not, but, uh, it's not necessarily canvassed as well as some, uh, other areas in Newport Beach. Um, so as much as we think that there could be greater turnover here, um, if, if it's effective on a weekday, maybe it's not a problem. But if we do want to increase turnover to accommodate businesses, um, you know, that, that's a very high, um, length of stay number for, for what we see. Um, in, in most commercial areas where we want a lot of turnover, I would, I would think that, uh, we wouldn't want, uh, more than, say, ten or fifteen percent of the vehicles staying more than three hours. Um, there's always got to be room for some vehicles to stay in the area. But this is definitely not, uh, looking at any of the long-term lots.
Weren't you doing any conclusions as to whether people were feeding the meters there or whether they have parking decals?
We didn't, uh, we didn't, uh, ask our staff to identify that. We were most interested in to see if there, there were vehicles doing that. And, uh, you know, we could drill down into the data a little bit further to, to identify that. Um, but this was kind of, uh, you know, a ten-thousand-foot view of it. Um, so we know that there's a lot of cars there staying longer amounts of time. We don't know, um, why they were or who they were. And, you know, some of that's just, uh, you know, a privacy issue and others, other pieces of that is, is again, trying to, to see if there was a problem before we started to drill down further.
Mark, I don't recollect. How, how much of that purple-colored area has metered parking?
Um, I, I think we did do an inclusive, I think, uh, inclusive, uh, study. So on the, on Balboa Boulevard, I think on the, on the, in, in the, the, I guess, middle of the median there has, uh, paid parking, metered parking. And I think the rest of it's fairly open. There is another lot just north, north of the Balboa Market that has meters as well. And, and I believe that's also in the study area.
So the bulk of that area has meters and, and yet we're seeing long-term parking?
Um, there, there's a number of spaces. And I'm, I'm not sure, again, you know, looking at this, you know, I don't want to mislead and say the, you know, the two-hundred-and-ten spaces that were there an hour were, you know, they were there at, at some point during the day for an hour. Um, so it's hard to say, you know, what, what percentage of those that, you know, if it's an enforcement issue, we, we think there are some concerns with enforcement. Um, but we don't know that that was purely the case here. That, you know, there's obviously a lot of, a lot of spaces here that also allow for longer-term parking. But yeah, there, there's, there's a good number of meters there as well. Kind of continuing on with that, you know, we, we talk about, uh, parking management and, uh, we have a, a, a pretty good laundry list of different parking management tools that we use and that we recommend and that we've identified that might be effective in, um, Balboa Village. Um, just broadly talking about some of these, you know, we talked about the time limits. As, uh, Commissioner Hen mentioned, you know, some of the, the areas have paid parking, others have time limits. Um, you know, time limits are difficult to enforce. We don't find them to be the, the most effective tool if we do want to increase turnover. Um, again, you know, it, it takes a lot more effort on the, on the part of the enforcement officers. And it's, it's just a little more vague as to how people get away with it. Um, whereas paid parking and meters, it's a little cleaner. Either, you know, you have a blinking meter and you know you violated it, or you have some sort of, uh, a payment system where you can see how much, uh, time you have. Um, so, you know, paid parking is kind of the, the better standard, especially when we want to, uh, look at turnover. Um, you know, there's, again, the, the thinking in, in a lot of beach communities about who's paying for the parking near the beach and how they do it, whether it's, uh, you know, should be set aside for residents, for the businesses or for the, the beach patrons, and making sure that each of those groups have, have some, uh, some accommodation and can find parking, but also not necessarily giving away some of the, the prime parking spaces to beach visitors when we'd really ha- rather have them directed into some of the beach lots that are also on-site. Uh, we also talk in, in the report about, uh, parking permits. And, um, you know, it's, it's largely, you know, you have visit, business permits or you have residential, uh, parking permits. And I think in, in this part of the report, in this part of the study area, we were talking about residential parking permits, um, some of the, the strengths with that and some of the, the limitations that those have. Again, you know, it, there's got to be some connection that we feel between the, the, the service that you get from having a residential permit and then the cost of it. Um, it does kind of set itself up for abuse. That we do have areas that have difficulties with, uh, residential permits. Um, the, the Balboa Village area has an additional challenge that coastal commission's always, not always a fan of, of residential, uh, parking permits near the beach. Um, so that there, you know, the opportunities for, for parking permits are limited, I think, in this area. Um, one of the sign, and one of the other issues that we identified was the signage. Um, again, as, as Commissioner Hen mentioned earlier, you know, the, the, the traffic and the circulation and the congestion sometimes caused by, by inadequate signage, that people just aren't sure where they're going to, to park and want to direct it. You know, there's, there's been some history in, in Newport Beach about appropriate signage directing to the beach lots and to different areas. Uh, we think that there's opportunities to increase the signage. I know when I, when I've come down to the beach, I, I do live in Irvine, so I come down on occasion since we're landlocked, um, that you're kind of driving down Balboa Boulevard and you're not really sure if, if you've passed, uh, the big beach lot or not. So you kind of question, you know, do I turn here? Do I keep going? Do I look for it? I know there is signage and I know that sometimes I miss it and sometimes I don't. So we think there's opport- So we think there's opportunities to increase the signage. Again, whether that's just, you know, simple, you know, sort of reflective sign indicating, you know, beach parking this way, or some of the newer, you know, sort of, you know, progressive electronic signs that indicate how many parking spaces are available in different sorts of areas, either at the beach lots or in other areas. And again, just helping people or visitors or people that aren't familiar with the area identify parking, and it also allows the city to encourage people to park where they think their, the best parking options are. I also talk about alternatives to single occupancy vehicles, and I think that's the bottom thing. And so we talk about a lot of these other parking management ideas, but also talking about alternatives, and whether that's going to be a shuttle for some of the employees or businesses that have an opportunity or have needs to be down in this part of the peninsula, whether that's a beach shuttle on the weekends to get visitors to come down so they're not clogging up some of the parking areas, or as the parking areas quickly reach a sort of a critical mass, whether there's a way to move those folks into the area. We talk about things, I did a little bike-sharing exercise last week in Newport Beach, and this is a public bike-sharing system, but also talking in the report a little bit about just having, you know, public bicycle facilities. And, you know, there's some opportunities to move people from vehicles onto alternative transportation. You know, we see it on Balboa Island, there are some electronic vehicle parking areas as well, or electric vehicles, I guess it is. So we do think there's some opportunity. There's not a huge opportunity in this part of the peninsula for, say, alternative vehicles, but there's some. And I think, you know, when we're looking at an inventory of sixteen-hundred vehicles, even if we can move, you know, three or four or five percent, that's, you know, forty-five to, say, you know, seventy-five, eighty vehicles out of the lots and onto bicycles. So we do think there's a real opportunity there, and when we start to look at the cost of supplying additional parking versus the cost of supplying, say, bicycle parking, we think it's got some real opportunities. And again, I was an advocate and a fan of the public bike-sharing demonstration last week as well. We also look at some of the current issues in this area in particular, including the zoning, and making sure that the zoning code is representative of the demands in Balboa Village, and that the Balboa Village can work in conjunction with other parts of the city, and that there's not extremely unique uses down here. We looked at the land use intensification, and I think what I mean by that sort of bullet is, is as, you know, land uses develop over the course of years, we've seen more sort of the retail and commercial businesses and storefronts sort of transforming into higher intensity or higher parking demand intensity uses, like restaurants. And so there's a big difference in how much parking is required for, say, an insurance company or a real estate company versus a restaurant. Typically, four to five more vehicles per thousand square feet are generated by a restaurant use than, say, a small retail or commercial use. We also looked at the Nautical Museum, we've met with members of the Nautical Museum, and again, you know, talking about induced and drive demand, you know, the Nautical Museum as it stands now has some parking demand, we also understand that it gets a lot of use from people that are in the area regardless, to go down to the beach and they'll stop by and visit the museum. The new museum, as it's planned here, and I have a lovely graphic from the Nautical Museum, you know, that could definitely change the amount of vehicles that are in the area specifically to come to the museum. And again, you know, we'll work with them to identify what those numbers are, and to sort of narrow down that, again, with the Coastal Commission's input as to when the peak times are for some of their events. The Balboa Theater is another development that we looked at, again, as it changes and starts to intensify its redevelopment, we think there's going to be an impact on the parking on certain theater times. And if it's on a matinee on the weekends, it could have some problems in the summer. But looking at that from an overall supply, and does that have a year-round impact? You know, already talked a little bit about the restaurants and the retail.
There are no matinees on the weekends for the Balboa Theater in the summer, that was the agreement with the Coastal Commission.
Yeah, and we talked about that, and I know that they were still interested in that, but thank you for the clarification. The restaurants and retail, and whether, if there's, you know, new restaurants or new retail coming into the area, whether that'll, you know, generate enough parking demand to necessitate an increase in supply. And I think the supply is the sort of last issue I have here for the current topics, and whether it makes sense, given the demand numbers that we looked at earlier, some of these, you know, sort of future issues, as to how the supply is going to change in the coming years. Wrapping up the recommendations that we had for this area, we have just a couple, again, this is just an overview, short-term recommendations. The first being, we think it's important to establish a parking benefit district, sometimes abbreviated as a PBD. We think this provides an opportunity for the, to take some of the responsibility and the onus off of purely the city from that command and control perspective, and share it with either some of the residents or the businesses, or work in conjunction with the businesses, residents, and the city to manage the parking inventory and supply in Balboa Village, and, you know, have an impact and an input into pricing and supply issues.
Are you talking about a parking district is provided under state law? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yes, I mean, I think that state law has a couple of different opportunities to do it under a parking BID that we can use either in conjunction or separately from the current BID, or a parking benefit district like has been established in Santa Monica or Pasadena. But it's different types of government structures, but basically trying to accomplish the same thing, and having some of the, I guess, the nexus between managing the area and being in the area maintained by the businesses, landowners, or residents.
Is there any revenue source to those outside of the parking meter revenue?
In California, they do have some opportunities to do it, if you want to do with a tax assessment on a BID. I'm not an expert on that piece of it. What we've seen is typically go with the parking meter revenues, and that's what we would recommend. You know, you can do it without that, if you just want to manage it and you don't necessarily have a revenue sharing or a revenue system in place, but, you know, our recommendation is to at least keep a piece of the revenues into the area, into the district.
So do you use that revenue stream to sell bonds then to construct improvements? Is that the philosophy?
There's been different ways to do it, you know, if you want to securitize something with the bonds, it definitely, you can add to it, depending on how big of the area, big of an area there is. You know, in Balboa Village, you know, we probably wouldn't necessarily include the beach lots, I don't know if the city would even want that. So, you know, there's a limited amount of revenue that could be generated from the parking meters, certainly as they stand now, but even if we were to meter the whole area. So it'd be difficult to, I think, to securitize that based on both, you know, just the sheer number of meters, as well as the year-round demand, because as we saw, that the demand drops off precipitously after the summer season. So it could be done, we've seen it done, it's not typically the way we do it, it's just, again, a part of the funding stream. I think it'd still have to go into some general fund or some ancillary sources for revenue to build a structure.
If you wanted to do a parking facility and sell revenue bonds for building the facility based on the revenue that that facility generated, would this be the mechanism that you'd use, or there'd be some other mechanism?
You could use it, I think from a, again, you know, without doing a financial analysis, it's hard to say. You know, when I did look at it, just as cursory numbers, I don't think we could generate enough revenue from this source to get bonded down here. You know, when I was looking at, say, you know, constructing a five-hundred-space garage based on the current demand that we see in the projected demand, even if it were to intensify, it's just hard to get sort of that steady year-round, day-in, day-out movement of vehicles that would require, you know, parking in that area and paying sufficient enough hourly or daily revenue to capture it. So I don't think it could be a tax revenue source to fully securitize a bond to build. But it's part of the stream, I think, and, you know, we've seen it, again, too, where you have, you know, you can either do in-lu fees that could supplement that, that you might be able to further securitize the bonds or further get revenue for that securitization. It could also, coupled with the taxing power of the city's general fund bonds, so.
Well, isn't that, though, how municipal parking garages are typically constructed, is through revenue bonds, like you're mentioning Santa Monica? Don't they sell revenue bonds to finance construction of those parking garages?
They, well, they've got several parking garages. The ones I'm most familiar with was done with some federal grants, some state grants, supplemented by some of the revenue that they had from their parking meters. Their parking meter system wasn't necessarily just in the area along the promenade, but it was a city-wide, that they were able to securitize that. And we've seen that in other areas, in the city of San Diego, that's what they've done to build some structures, is take some of the revenue from citywide parking meters. So you could certainly do that in Newport Beach as well. Again, you have a lot more meters citywide than you would necessarily just in the Balboa Village area. So for this small of a geographic area with, you know, this limited number of potential parking meters, I think it's hard to get enough cars to, you know, plug those to get enough revenue. And broadly speaking, you know, we see parking structures, although in this market, I think they've come down a little bit. Historically, over the last five years, a parking structure is about, with not a whole lot of seismic issues or concerns, a very sort of vanilla parking, you know, cement parking structure would be around, you know, fourteen to sixteen to eighteen thousand dollars per space. So, you know, if you have a four or five-hundred space facility, it's going to be six or seven million dollars, it's going to take, you know, a good amount of turnover to generate enough revenue to support that sort of endeavor on a revenue basis, especially if we look at a twenty-to-twenty-five-year life for a parking structure in this sort of marine environment.
And that's just for the cost of improvements, that's not including land cost, is that right?
Yeah, that's an important clarification. Yeah, that's purely construction costs, so land costs would be, I think, in Newport Beach, much higher. So it's a challenge, it's not an intractable one by any means, but the cost of parking structures does limit the ability to be self-financing, self-supporting. That said, you know, parking lots are a little bit cheaper, we see right around three to four thousand dollars for the construction only of a surface parking lot, something like the Balboa lots down here, you know, probably could be a little more self-sustaining. Right now, again, we would recommend for the pricing, some of the on-street parking, to have some connection between demand and price. You know, we identified from our accounts and from our experience that the peak summer and particularly the weekends are very busy, and we would suggest a higher rate on those times of day and those times of year, or those times of the week, I should say, for vehicles coming in the area to expect to pay a little bit more. It's not a huge jump from where the daily fees are now, but we do think the weekend rate should be higher than, during the summer, should be higher than the weekend rates on the non-peak season, say, October till May or so. And conversely, we have a tier-three identified here as the weekday rates. We've just left this at the weekday, since we saw during the summer about a sixty-seven percent occupancy, that, you know, the weekday rate should be lower still. We could look at the difference between a summer weekday rate and a winter weekday rate, if necessary. But we really think that there should be some market component or some pricing component to parking, that, you know, it truly does have some costs involved, as we noted from just purely the construction costs and the land use costs, that there should be some connection between what's used and what's valued and what the price is. And we continue that on to the parking permits, that if there is parking permits in the area, either business permits or residential permits, either off the busy beach peak season or otherwise, that there should be some connection with the value of that permit, the value of the parking and the cost of the permits. We do have some recommendations on those permit prices as well. Longer term, you know, we talk about, you know, the need to increase supply, you know, whether that means to help support some of the business development or economic development initiatives in this part of Balboa Village, whether there's a seasonality component that should be considered, you know, making sure that there is a relationship with on-street parking. You know, typically, although structures cost three to four to five times more than a typical surface lot, people's willingness to park in a structure is much lower than it is to park either on-street or on a surface lot. So you have to sort of manage the whole system as if it's one, and that would generally indicate that on-street parking for a municipal lot should be more expensive than the structured parking, which is inverse to the cost of supplying that. And again, you know, the Coastal Commission will have, will want to have a say on anything that's built or any change to the current parking system as they deal with most issues of access on the California coast. And I think the final point I wanted to make is, again, to monitor the parking system, that, you know, we come down here and make our recommendations, and, you know, we hope that the city considers some of these things seriously, but we also know that it's not static, that our experience, if it shows us anything, it shows us that parking is very much dynamic, particularly in this area. And so we think it's important to measure the parking, you know, it goes back to the old, I think it was Peter Drucker, that, you know, talking about what's managed is what's measured, or what's measured is what's managed. And it's important to understand what the parking system's doing, and that, you know, we shouldn't raise rates if there's no demand for it, but, you know, if the parking's impacted like it is here, you know, pricing is one tool that we have in our arsenal to manage that, but we have to know what it is. And so kind of the strength of a lot of our reports and our reputation is, is we have good quantitative data to back up some of our recommendations and some of our policy initiatives. So I would encourage the council and the city to continuously monitor the parking system to make sure that the goals it has for parking and for access are being met by either the, some of the parking management tools or the pricing components of it. And I guess that's essentially my nickel tour of the Balboa Village parking report.
Councilman Gardner?
Thank you, we've been working on Cronomar as well. Certainly, Balboa Village has some unique aspects to it. A parking structure there makes a lot more sense than a parking structure we've talked about in Cronomar, where do you put it? We're so linear compared to it. Also, it seems like the peninsula, particularly the Point area, it's just such a natural for golf carts, and to consider preferential parking, or, I mean, areas for just those, might encourage more of those, which will help. The one concern I have is we go forward, and I'm not quite sure how we're determining to work each different aspect, but one thing that they have in common is increased needs for enforcement. And when we have met, and I know, I'm sure, when Mike met too, that has been the concern when the police representative was just like, we have so many people, so we're going to have to, even as we consider each village and its uniqueness, we have to be very careful to take that large view. The same with permits, once we start down that road, I mean, there's just almost no part of town that doesn't want permits, at least not as close to the beach. And we also found something interesting in our meeting, that at least in Cronomar, and I don't know if this is true in Balboa, but with building costs, what they are, your rental per square foot, people, merchants were renting garages so they could store their merchandise there, because it was cheaper than adding square footage, which is, so they have to be priced to really encourage people to clean out their garages, not just of their own junk, but obviously renting them out to people. So these are the bigger issues. And just one thing I was thinking of when I was at the beach on the Friday before the Fourth of July, by ten AM in Cronomar, the parking, it was a parking lot for Marguerite and PCH all the way down, and it was that way all day, basically, people waiting to get in. And I'm wondering if at certain points, such as PCH and MacArthur, Newport Boulevard, Superior, we couldn't at some point have active signs that say, beach lot full, Crystal Cove this way, Huntington Beach that way, or something. And at least before they drive down and get caught in that, give them some choices. That would be, I think, an inexpensive way of relieving a little bit of the burden on our beach residents.
You seem to be indicating that the parking meter revenue, I don't know if it was just the incremental or the total parking meter revenue from this area, and the revenue that would be coming off of any parking structure would not be enough to pay for the parking structure. Do you have, I know you haven't done any financial analysis, but is there any rule of thumb as to how much has to be subsidized in order to be able to build one of those things?
In terms of having enough reserves or enough on a daily revenue movement?
Well, you're going to get so much money off of the parking revenue going into the garage, so much money every day coming off of the parking meters, if you were to dedicate that to servicing bonds to build the If you were to dedicate that to servicing bonds to build the structure, what percentage of the total cost of structure still has to be paid for by other means?
Yeah, I mean, it, it depends on, on, you know, sort of the, the market conditions and, you know, sort of the, the bonding ability of the, the underlying authority. You know, we do a lot of airport construction and a lot of, you know, looking at that revenue stream. And, you know, airports are a little easier to predict the number of vehicles coming in and also to predict the, the revenue. I mean, it's, in a, in a lot of ways, have some, some franchise protection at, at airports. So, you know, there's not a lot of secondary alternatives, although the off-street lots, you know, work in, again, in harmony with the, the main airport lot. In a, in a commercial area, it's, it's, I don't really have a rule of thumb for it. You know, I think in, in the city of Pasadena, they've, they've built a lot of their garages with, with revenue and then the bonding authority of the city. So they, they will, they will store their revenue until they get, I'm not sure what the threshold is, I could find it for you, say eighty percent of the revenue to, to build it, then we'll construct it and use the, the remaining revenues to help pay it down. Again, they do that on, on a much larger scale than just a, a particular neighborhood or a particular area. They, they typically do it citywide, so they have a little more, you know, you know, bonding capacity for that.
Yeah, but our problem is, is it's a, we have a seasonal situation there, so you get this huge demand that's seasonal, then the rest of the year, you'd probably be shooting the cannon through some of these parking garages.
Yeah, and, and I looked at, again, you know, this is just, you know, sort of a, you know, back of the napkin analysis of, of a structure, of a four or five hundred space structure in this area. And, and, you know, it's, it's, it's compelling because we do think you can charge a significant amount, say, you know, sixteen to eighteen dollars on the weekends for, you know, maybe as much as half the year, where you could probably fill that garage up. A lot of the, the private, private garages, private parking lots, say in downtown LA or in Manhattan, you know, they rely on turnover. So, you know, in, in, on a beach, on a beach lot, we, we might anticipate somebody comes in at, at nine or ten AM, as Councilmember Gardner suggested, it was happening on the Fourth of July, and stay all day. We only get one turn out of that. We only have one, one piece of revenue from that lot that day. Um, you know, we could, we can make it hourly, but, you know, again, at some point, it's going to collapse on itself. And, and I think I, I identified that it would have to be about eighty percent full, about eighty percent of the year to, to be self-supporting, to, to match just the construction piece of, of the revenue. And so that's the challenge is that, and again, you know, these are numbers that, that do not have any scrutiny beyond me trying to entertain myself on Excel one afternoon. But, but I do think that, that would take a significant number of days for the garage to be about eighty percent full. Because as, as I showed earlier, even on the busiest days, it's never going to be a hundred percent full, just, you know, cars, cars turn in and out and cars are misparked, et cetera. So you'd have to think eighty percent of the day with just one turn, that, that the garage would have to be full, say, I think, I think I was looking at right around two hundred and seventy days. And so, so that's a big challenge. It's not, again, it's not an insuperable challenge if we have other larger tractors in the area like the theater or like the nautical museum, like, like higher intensity restaurants. It's, it's achievable. On, on today's, today's conditions, it's much more of a challenge.
Councilman Henn?
Well, that's right, and I think that's what the real wild card is here. I think what you're proposing is, is to take this in stages. Let's see if we can manage better what we have right now and see how that comes out. One of the things that could come out of that is a higher stream of parking revenue just by better managing what we have. It's very clear that it's, it's just a, I'm sure, not untypical to lots of city situations where the parking, the metered street parking just sort of develops by a process of its own over time. And there's no real rationale or rhyme or reason to it when you look at it today. Some streets have meters, some don't. You know, the, the district has changed over time, but beyond that, so there's, there's the, there's the wild card of better managing what we have today and what will be the impact. That'll help us a lot to determine, you know, what's available to help if a structure becomes desirable for that area. But then beyond that, the development of key players in the area, such as the nautical museum, can provide another shot of revenue enhancement, if you will, going forward. So we've got real wild cards to deal with. I'm not, I'm not Pollyannaish enough to think that this will find an answer that will completely self-finance, but I, I have to believe that there's real opportunity to have, to, to make a large contribution toward the cost of financing. And I think that's probably the realistic goal we need to look at.
Yeah, and, and I think we've had a, a number of meetings throughout this process where we've had an opportunity to, to look at the, the potential of, of building a structure. And I think that's the initiative that I took to, to look at what it would take. And kind of, you know, the more I was playing with some of those numbers and thinking, well, you know, what is the elasticity of parking? What is the demand in this area? And is it achievable? And I kind of went in on the premise that a structured parking environment in this area is just not, not tenable at all. But the more I looked at it, the more I thought, well, if these things do come into play, talking about the theater and, and the museum and, and the restaurants, that, that it does have some potential. But you're, you're absolutely right, not right now.
It's a chicken and egg process. We clearly need revitalization in Balboa Village. How do you get that? Well, you probably ought to have parking availability in order to have redevelopment that makes sense, that can accommodate, that can be accommodated by additional parking. And so it's, it's a tough situation. So I think there's, there are public imperatives that can be served here as well.
Yeah, you're right.
As strict economics, so.
And I should go back to your, your initial comment about managing the system. And, and, and again, we, we drive that home in the report a lot, that, you know, no matter what we build down here, no matter what the parking supply looks like, if it's not managed well, it, it's all going to go for naught. So I think that the first step and the easiest step or the lowest hanging fruits are always manage the system more efficiently. And, and again, that just means more actively and, and taking it seriously, that, that parking is an opportunity and a limitation on, on any sort of development that happens here. So it, so it is important, I'm a parking consultant, so I have to believe that, but from what we've seen in economic development and planning circles as well, it's, it's important to manage it. And it does give you an opportunity to not only evaluate your system, but also to help you plan for, for future uses.
And to pick a, and to pick a management structure here that has flexibility going forward, such that it could support, you know, the amortization of a new parking structure or whatever, the governance of all of that, so.
Right.
Councilman Teagle?
Uh, yes, I have a, kind of a question for you as a parking expert. Maybe you can kind of help me understand this a little bit better. There is businesses that are successful, they're thriving, and part of it is a lot of people ride the bike or they walk there, kind of a thing. And then, you know, the city is regulating them as far as, as parking and saying, well, you can only have so many tables, umbrellas based on parking. And yet somehow people find a way there, and if they can't park, then they walk or they ride their bike. And so it becomes this kind of a self-regulating thing, or they go someplace else. So my question is, how do you, how do you sort of develop some flexibility in, in parking and how you regulate parking that does account for, for those kinds of pedestrian ways of getting to a thriving establishment?
You're, you're right. I mean, it's part of, part of the problem that we see in parking is that, you know, sort of free, abundant and, and sort of bottomless parking just generates more people coming to park. You know, I was, I was out on an outing this weekend and there were, you know, four of us going to a restaurant, and we decided to take three cars just because we thought it might be easier, you know, when we're breaking up. But if it was in an impacted area or an area that had priced parking, we probably would have jammed into one car. Four people in one car's not that much of a, of a jam, but, you know, it, it changes the way you behave. So free parking, you know, it's, it's a buffet system, you know? Buffets, you tend to eat more. If it's a la carte, you tend to eat less. It's the same with parking. So how we account for things like you're saying, especially in an area like this, which is sort of, you know, walking friendly and biking friendly, and I come down here myself on, on the weekends on my bike and provide limited patronage to some of the places. And, and so we'd look at that sort of independently. It's, again, it's hard to manage, it's hard to understand. Different areas, the, the city of Portland, the city of, of Copenhagen have extremely high bike, bike access rates. So you have to take that into account. We, we will come in and do a parking study on a specific land use or a specific area if we're asked to by the developer or by a municipality or by a business, and, and look at that, both in terms of some, again, some quantifiable numbers from the, the Census Bureau as to how people are accessing that area or how people in that area commute to work. We'll also go in and, and do a study and, and, you know, identify either from a survey or from observation how people are, are getting to that site. Are they taking transit? Are they walking? Are they, you know, taking a bicycle or some other means? And so oftentimes, it's, it's unfortunately, you know, very site-specific and, and there's, you know, we have rules of thumb as to what, what different areas generate and what the demand is for parking. But, but it does take some, some flexibility and some nuance, which is why I suppose there's a, a parking consulting industry, is that it's not quite as explicit as it might seem.
So you could ultimately inject some flexibility into those ratios? Because it seems as if economic development is kind of the, what a lot of people are seeking, and then when you have that good success, and then people are saying, well, it's, it's that restaurant or that, you know, cafe or whatever is too successful, now you have to take some tables away and this kind of a thing.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I could never encourage that. You know, we do see some, some agglomeration benefits for areas, you know, we were working in, in Corona Del Mar, as, as Councilmember Gardner suggested, that, you know, we do have some agglomeration of those restaurants. The more there are, the more people come to that area, going to a restaurant. And with parking, we, we try to do what we call a shared parking analysis and say, you know, if, if one's a, a restaurant that has high volume at lunch, another's is a, is a coffee shop and another is a fine dining, we see that there's a difference in how those parking areas fill up. So we'll either do a study where they can say, well, can we share this parking system or whatever else? Or are there opportunities in the neighborhood from a bank or from a, a place of worship that they can do it? And so we'll look at it as, as more of a, a system than an independent area. And so when we're looking at it as just one lot attached to one building, you are limited as to what you can do, because there will be spillover if it's very successful. But, you know, we also try to manage it, in successful restaurants, a lot of the parking is from employees. So is there a way to manage that? They're there eight to 10 hours a day. You know, they, they can park or are more willing to park a little bit further away. Can, can we provide employee parking for that, that underlying land use somewhere else so that the customers and the revenue generating folks have accessible parking? Can we manage it through price? So that, again, there's a couple of different arrows in our quiver that we, we like to use depending on where it is. Again, I apologize, it's not one good answer. We, we try to be flexible and we try to implement that into our zoning code to say, let, let's look at this from, from a different perspective than, than the strict sort of nineteen fifty's, nineteen sixty zoning code.
Okay. So I picked up on one of the things that you said, if the business is successful, you know, don't encourage the city to take away tables, you know, kind of a thing, if, if there is, if there does seem to be parking in that area.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we, we would, again, suggest, you know, ma, better managing the parking as opposed, I mean, I, I can't imagine we would ever encourage sort of a reduction in somebody's business because of parking. Parking is, is a limiter in a lot of places, but it's, it's, it's a bad way to do it, I think. And so there, there are, because there are other methods to do it. We can accomplish the same goal without necessarily pulling the revenue or pulling the, you know, sort of customers out of a business.
Mr. Tim Curry?
Thank you. Your study didn't take into account that the amount of people who park on Balboa Island and come over on the ferry, or, or did you, were you able to evaluate that at all?
We, we thought about that. So no, we, we don't have any sort of enumeration of that. We, we have studied Balboa Island and, and, you know, we tried to quantify some of those numbers as part of that report. Some of the, that, both the anecdotal and the observational numbers indicate that it's not a huge impact. Again, I'm going to be the first to say that a one or two percent change in the number of vehicles is significant. So we don't even know if it, if it rose to that level. Again, we did the same sort of turnover analysis along some of those, those commercial streets towards the ferry or leading into the ferry when, when we did that, that study. So we know that there's some folks that, that park on the island, that, you know, park for free on the island and will come over to Balboa Village across the ferry. We, we think the number is reasonably small, so, you know, under, under fifteen or twenty vehicles perhaps.
Of course, if it costs sixteen dollars to park at the village, there'd probably be some diversion of people who would park on the island if it were not also part of a comprehensive parking strategy.
I, I would, I would think that's correct. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else from staff on this?
Well, I don't know if the, the council wanted to have any discussion on the recommendations and give staff some direction on what we might pursue or bring back to the city council for some action.
Let's see if anyone wants to comment on this. Does anyone in the audience want to comment on this report? Step forward, please. I could tell you were just waiting to get up here.
I wasn't going to get up here. People are not WR building. I've owned property within the bid residential since nineteen sixty-five. When I saw this report and they talk about the assessment, the parking assessment district and whatnot, I got a little concerned. It isn't an overlay of the business improvement district and the planning maps are not precise either. There's three different maps you can look at. Biggest concern I have is I've lived there until seventy, then I went away on a two-year assignment, finally came back thirty-seven years later. But I've been there the last six, seven years and being retired and around there all the time is the parking problem with local residents between Cypress and Coronado. The Balboa properties are in the business district. There's eleven units there, legal, non-conforming, grandfathered in with no parking. It's the old Del Mar motel. I hate to say it, but in nineteen sixty-five, I bought five lots that were the parking lot for the old Star motel and the, the Del Mar and converted them into housing. Five duplexes, three of them had been converted to triplexes. One of them supposedly legal after I filed a complaint and referenced the city maps and done away with it. There's an average of four and a half cars in all those buildings. You go over to Bay Avenue, there again, between Cypress and Coronado, there's nine units, no parking, grandfathered in. There's another three-unit building, I believe it's three or four unit. Legal or non-conforming garages, you can't get a car in them. There's another four unit with four garages. You can't get a car in them. There was one over in Balboa that just came before the zoning administrator for a conditional use permit where they're making them enlarge the garage to conform with today's standards. The other problem is many of those garages down there, this is just one little area. I learned an awful lot about the neighborhood, walking with city staff and others on AD-101. But I think the same condition exists down on Harding between Cypress and what is Adams, I think. But there's an awful lot of residents down there that have no place to park. Now, why can't we get parking permits? Santa Monica has them and whatnot. The main thing is evening parking. People start coming home at five o'clock and they're all gone by eight o'clock in the morning. It, it, it's just a, a rough, it's the oldest park of the city. And this wasn't addressed in this report. I thought from the meeting we had with the consultants at the American Legion that the study zone went further west, but I see it's just up to Coronado now. But it's a serious problem. Sharon, you've been looking at this since eighty-five when you first started talking. I find your name in some of this stuff, but it, it's something that I hope this council can get started and have a continuing effort to improve the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Councilman Henn, do you have a recommendation here?
Well, I participated in the steering committee that was behind this report getting generated and, and I am in agreement with the recommendations here that are summarized at the, on page four here, the lead-in executive summary here. I'm, I'm especially concerned that some sort of a governance mechanism be established here soon and that we get a, that we get specific recommendations for what that government's, governance system should be, whether it's a parking benefit district or some other sort of mechanism. Because we really need to bring some rationality to the parking in this area at, at, right out of the box here. And I think that alone will be able to help with the parking situation. The, that governance mechanism needs to have flexibility associated with it such that if we do identify a need and a solution for a additional parking, a parking structure, that that new structure has a much better chance to be economic or at least substantially economic than it might have otherwise been. I don't see how an additional parking structure can be even close to economic while we still have lots of free parking. have lots of free parking right in the immediate area. And/or low-cost parking on street in the immediate area. So I'm basically in the, in the, in support of these four recommendations. We have to do something. Balboa Village is, in my view, I'm not, blight might be a, perhaps right now, a bit of a too stronger word than I should be using, but not by much. This is an area that is crying out for revitalization. And every time I think about this problem, I come back to the issue of parking as one of the fundamental building blocks for solutions to allow revitalization across this area. So I'm very strongly recommending that we move forward and have staff come back with specific recommendations about how to move these recommendations from the Walker parking consultants forward.
Could I?
Yes, Councilman Gardner.
One of the things we're doing in Corona del Mar eventually when it comes here is we're proposing a pilot program, taking one area. And as I say, we're distinct and different, but I'm thinking that perhaps one of the things you might consider is, particularly in terms of residential permit parking, is some kind of pilot program instead of just launching into something that is in concrete.
I would imagine that we can have elements of this that would be piloted. And that's why I keep coming back to this governance structure. If we have a governance structure that's looking after this issue on an ongoing basis, we'll have a mechanism in place to make adjustments and make changes on the fly as we go forwards.
Okay. Any other comments for staff? Okay, our next item is the harbor area management plan, but I think we need to get into our closed session. It's 5:15 already. We've got a pretty heavy closed session agenda. Can we continue this to another meeting? Is there any problem with that? Do we need a motion to do that, or?
No, I don't think so.
No motion's necessary? Okay, well, we'll reschedule the harbor area management plan discussion for a future study session. Is there any public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, with that, we'll adjourn to closed session.
With that, we'll adjourn to closed session.
Thank you for your attendance. We will now move on to the next slide.